With that, Stephanie, will you read the virtual meeting rules? I don't see anybody here, but if you're so inclined to read them, you can, otherwise you can call it all.
Okay, I think we all can recite them by heart by now. All right, roll call, Brett Gary. Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
Gail Brown. All right, here. Rich Beal. I'll be able to unmute. Deidre Fetter.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Alrighty, thank you, and while we have a good internet connection at Councilmember Beal's house this evening, we're gonna go ahead and let him lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We'll give just a second here for Stephanie to mute everybody, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, much appreciated. We'll get everybody back in here and off the mic or on the mic. Alrighty, looks like council, we have the agenda before you this evening, and I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, council. We do not have any presentations this evening. We now have the consent agenda before us, which includes the approved minutes of the regular meeting on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and special meeting August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. A resolution thirty-four twenty-one for Sir Optum's, Sir Optum's proclamation. And a resolution thirty-five twenty-one authorizing the mayor to execute an entered local agreement for stolen water grant application. Resolution thirty-six twenty-one, setting a public hearing date to consider a petition for a frontage improvement waiver. Resolution thirty-seven twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to sign a security and improvement agreement. Resolution thirty-eight twenty-one, amending the master fee schedule body cam recordings. And a motion authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one to legal services agreement, Mickey Jackson Meyer LLP, Mr. Ken Harper. So anyone from the audience who would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? And I do not see anyone from the audience this evening, or any audience this evening, Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Must have been a long weekend, long vacation. Okay, with that, I see no one, so they have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same side. Motion carried, thank you, council. And this is when we move on to our first citizen public comment, I see no citizens participating this evening, do you, Stephanie?
I do not see anyone.
Okay, we'll just go ahead and move right on to items eight A and B, our public hearing and a resolution for a vacation of a public utility easement. Our associate planner, Alicia, she was here to present our staff report this evening. Alicia, you're on.
Hi, everyone. We have a utility easement vacation that was requested by the property owner Jared Shelby. The site is Blenheim Heights, section six, block seventy, and the address is four oh five South Fifty-Fourth Avenue. They're looking to vacate the thirty-foot utility easement that's recorded on plot of Blenheim Heights, section six. They, on the north and west side of the property, they would like to take it from thirty feet down to ten feet. You can see in the exhibit map and the legal description what exactly they're wanting to do. In Exhibits two and four, there's also a vicinity map included. But the property is located on the corner of Fifty-Fourth Avenue and Everett. He routed the the application out to franchise utilities as well as brought it, sent it to surrounding property owners to inform them that this had been applied for. We received a few comments, well, not necessarily comments, mostly questions about, okay, what is this? Do I need to be concerned about this? What exactly are they doing from some two neighboring property, property owners? None of them, neither of them submitted a formal comment, but they did have some questions. We also, we received no objections to the proposal, and Public Works approved the vacation request via M O. The public, the utility easement really serves no public purpose at this time. And can be, it wouldn't really affect the health, safety, welfare of the property owner or any surrounding property owners or the city in general.
Okay, and Stephanie, you did not receive any comments on this item, have you?
I have not.
Okay, very good, thank you. So with that, thank you, Alicia, I will open the public hearing at six oh seven. And Stephanie, do you have any public on this Zoom meeting that you see now?
I do not see anyone.
Since we do not have any public present in this meeting, means we will not have any public comments, so I will close the public hearing at six oh seven. And then, excuse me, resolution thirty-two twenty-one, vacation of the public utility easement. Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve. I move to approve resolution thirty-nine twenty-one, utility easement vacation, V A C A oh three two oh twenty-one.
That'd be resolution thirty-two twenty-one?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine twenty-one, I have a typo on yours, sorry.
Apparently I do. I stand corrected, thank you, Councilman Bloom, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any questions of staff, John, do you have something there?
Yeah, I do, so I just, I, I don't know if it matters, but my recommended motion has different verbiage. So, it says, I, I, I'll just, I'm not, I'm not making the motion here, I just wanna say that it says, I moved to pass resolution thirty-nine twenty-one, authorizing the vacation of a portion of the thirty-foot and with utility easement for the file, V A C A zero zero three dash two zero two one. So that's not what Mr. Bloom read.
Alicia, could you give us clarification on that, please?
The recommended motion in the staff report was what Mr. Smart read.
Okay.
The motion I've read works as well.
It does, it just doesn't specify vacating a portion thirty-foot and with utility easement. So those are important words, I think.
Councilman, Councilman Bloom, would you just go ahead, if you would, rescind your motion and we'll have.
I'll rescind my motion.
And Councilmember Smart, would you care to?
I will, but my second comment is, is that I'm a neighbor of this property owner, but I don't feel that I'm biased in any way, shape, or form, so I feel fully capable of making the motion and voting without bias.
Bronson Brown, you are good with his discovery or?
Yeah, yes, that, that's fine, he, he said that he, he disclosed a potential conflict, but he doesn't have one, so that's.
Very good, always like to confer with the, the legal guy there. With that, Councilman Smart, if you would, please go ahead.
Sure, so I moved to pass resolution thirty-nine twenty-one, authorizing the vacation of a portion of the thirty-foot and with utility easement for file, V A C A zero zero three dash two zero two one.
Have a second, please?
Second.
You got in there, perfect, all right. Motion and a second, and then, council, any questions of Alicia this evening? John, your hand still up, is that all?
It's supposed to be done.
That's fine, not a problem. Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you, council. And moving on to items eight C is a resolution amending the salary schedule to add an IT position. And we have our HR manager, Selena Smathers, here with us this evening to present the staff report. Selena.
Oh, hi, council. So I'm just gonna start out by jogging your memory a bit, because if you go back, it's quite a while now, it's back at the end of May, looks like it was May twenty-seventh. The Washington State Auditor's Office, S A O, they did an audit on our cybersecurity. We had an executive session to go over that, because a lot of that information is somewhat confidential. We don't necessarily wanna discuss the details of it, so I'm just gonna keep our request for an IT position somewhat at the thousand-foot level. Go over that. But part of their audit really talked about that we do lack some cybersecurity management that we need to have. Part of the staff report that you'll see there, we did go ahead and list some entities. Some of them are local, like Ellensburg, Benton County Cascade Medical Center. These are places that have been hacked or had some sort of phishing, and they ended up having to pay a ransom in order to get control of their system again. And that's a big concern of cybersecurity today. So one of the things that S A O had suggested was that we have a designated IT, either person or entity, manage our cybersecurity and bring that up to par. Once we started looking at our, the issues with our IT, we realized we really need a person designated to come in and do this. The contracting it out will continue to leave holes. Right now, I would say in the past four to five years, our IT system has doubled to triple in its capacity. We went from before COVID, having, most people had a desktop. A short handful had a laptop, to almost everybody has a desktop, most people have a laptop. Many people have cell phones, many people have iPads. All of these things are connected to the server and need administrative management, and they need to continually be tracked and upgraded. And just the amount of hardware and different software that we use for our operating system today has gotten to the point where, unfortunately, Stephanie, who is our city clerk, is also spending about half her time doing IT-related things, and IT has totally encompassed her job. We really need to free up her time to do city clerk duties again. Also with Stephanie, we do have a contract with Benton REA, which has been really beneficial in handling some of our administrative duties. But we're really thinking that a designated IT person would be beneficial to come in, because we need somebody that's invested in the city of West Richland. Even though Benton REA has been great, we've had a couple IT emergencies where, for instance, payroll went down on the day of payroll, and I had to go to the bank, and nobody was available to put the patches together so that we could get that to the bank. So we need somebody that's here, that's invested in the city, that can react at a moment's notice for some of the more critical structure issues. Also, somebody that's here and in the city, when they create policies, they'll be able to then put together a training program, so that staff understands what's in the policies and how they need to follow policy. And then this person will be able to audit that and make sure that people are actually doing what they need to do to protect the system. So what we were looking at is, we put together an idea to have an IT systems administrator type of level come in about the third quarter of this year as a new full-time F T E, so a, an additional full-time person for the city. And Erin, do you wanna kind of take a quick jump to talk about the, where the money's coming from on that?
That's the next item. The next one's budget.
I'm gonna go ahead and close up my thoughts on this, so that we can talk about where the money's coming from, 'cause I really feel like that's probably the biggest question most of council has about this. So I think we'll move on to what's probably very interesting to everyone.
Okay, and Stephanie, do you see anyone join us from the citizens of our great city?
I don't see anyone except for council and staff.
Okay, then I will go ahead and ask for a motion from council. After we go through motion and second, we can open for conversation.
I moved to pass resolution forty twenty-one, amending the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two salary schedule.
And motion from Councilman Smart, second from Councilmember Fetter. And with that, I'll entertain questions of Selena, if there's anything Erin needs to jump into. She can also do so, I see Councilmember Smart's hand is up.
So, Selena and, and, and I guess Stephanie as well. My, so, so we currently say about, anecdotically, about half of Stephanie's time is spent with these type of tasks now. She's not, forgive me if I say this wrong, but she's not our, she's not an IT expert by training presumably, or maybe she is in the closet, I don't know. But, but she's done a great job for us, and, and we've survived the first with the help from Benton REA at times. What is the value of the contract with Benton REA? Do we know what that is? Is that a steady outgoing of what money, or is that just like a spur of the moment kind of thing?
I think that's something that Erin and I had a conversation on today, so I'm gonna ask Erin to go ahead and dive into the comparable and what the.
So there's actually, they, Benton REA provides some scanning software, so they scan our systems, and then they have like the patch management system and some of those other systems that we utilize, some of our, I think Bit Defender, if I'm, Stephanie can probably correct me. So they're a key part of continuing our relationship with them. Now, they do come in and provide assistance in helping set up hardware stations and such. And anytime they come in to do any work, that part of the contract is variable as far as it's seventy-five dollars an hour for during the week, and if we ever have to call them after hours, it's about a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And I, I ran the figures, let me pull it up really quick here. Just to give you an idea of what we've been paying out the last few years for them. So in twenty twenty, for example, the main part of their contract that is for like the system and the, the software management portion of it is, for twenty twenty was about twenty thousand dollars. And then, regular hours was about nine thousand six hundred dollars. And then OT was about fifteen hundred dollars. So there's roughly thirty-one thousand spent last year, is very comparable to twenty nineteen as well. A little bit more in twenty nineteen, actually, but they do come in and provide some, which that portion of the contract, I could see tapering off as a variable, but I think it's really important to keep that as an emergency, like if we need that extra assistance or something big happens. And then also to keep that software management portion, so that we don't have to go out and procure that ourselves. So, and that's something very important, and I believe, Stephanie, you told me that they have, like, given you access to see it as well now.
Sorry, they give what?
They have given you access to go in and like see it and manage it somewhat too. We would expect that person to be able to, like, take that part on.
Yeah, and utilize that system, and it would cost the city more to go out. We essentially get like a, a multi-user discount, 'cause it's through REA. So the cost to the city to go out and, and have that ourselves would be more than what we're paying REA.
So I guess I've got a couple of other just points to make. One, so one is, it doesn't sound to me like we currently have a full F T E's worth of work in IT. We could probably gin up a full F T's work, but my question is, has there been discussion about having this person multitask and maybe do other things for the city? Are there any ideas about what else they might do? The system all, you know, up and running, I understand there's maintenance and so forth, but honestly, I, okay, so that's one question, but let me just state the other two really quickly. And one is just a comment on this list of victims of IT or of, of cyber viruses or whatever, cyber attacks. Do we know if these entities, like I can vouch for one of them, they've already got, a lot of these places probably already have in cybersecurity infrastructure built into their operations. And so saying that they, you know, had to pay next number of thousands or millions of dollars to get back online is sort of a little bit condemning the idea of having cybersecurity, you know, they, like, I know at least one of them spends a small fortune on sites, cybersecurity, and yet they still evidently paid a ransom. So I just caution us to not believe that we're like out of the woods just because we have a cybersecurity professional that we're paying, by the way, upwards of two hundred thousand dollars a year for. I mean, I look at some of these numbers and think, well, the city of Ellensburg, one year of paying the cybersecurity professional, and, you know, unless they get attacked every year at that level, we would be, we wouldn't, we would be money behind at, at the rate of that, so. I'm just, I don't know, just a, a little bit of a concern of the return on investment, but I, I understand that as we move into the future, this will be more, will become more of a target probably, and, and it's probably not a bad investment, especially, but I guess what I look at is that that really the primary knowns here are that we spend the current amount of staff time on IT work. And we also hire out IT work. And so I can see those two things adding up as, you know, fifty percent, maybe a seventy-five percent F T E. And for that reason, I guess I would support, you know, bringing on IT professional, but it still leaves, you know, twenty to forty percent sort of unaccounted for time perhaps, and that's why I was at, that's, so I'm circling back around and saying, what, what else would this person be responsible for? And how can we offload enough tasking to make this person worth, you know, two hundred thousand bucks a year in overhead costs, so?
Well, I will happily jump in on this one. So with this, 'cause we did, we, Stephanie and I went through very detailed on the state auditor's cybersecurity audit. And we have several items that are sensitive in nature, so we don't talk about very specifically the items. But those things, there's a huge list that need to be addressed, that the amount of IT staff we have on hand now, we can't get to. We don't have the expertise for in-house, and we don't have the time to get to them. So, and then from a financial perspective, one of the objectives to this is to, we're not gonna eliminate risk. Like, we're just not going to ever eliminate it, but we can reduce our risk. And the amount you're seeing of the cybersecurity attacks, you see it in the news all over. You're seeing it coming out of Washington, it's a huge focus of theirs. But that, from a financial perspective, we have published reports out there that show exactly what our bank balance is. And so those can be items that people are drawn to. And so as a financial person, we're trying to mitigate that risk and protect those assets as much as we can. So even if we can cut it in half, or even eighty percent, I think that it's a big investment, because at this point, we don't have a bunch of things in place that need to be in place to even mitigate. Additionally, we have WCIA, our insurance. They have come out, and I think we talked about it back in May, maybe, or sometime, where they, we used to have million-dollar cyber event insurance. So that was cut this year to fifty thousand dollars. So our insurance only covers fifty thousand dollars now. It's expected next year that it's going to be zero, just because they're not gonna cover it. Now, we can go out and potentially get additional insurance, specific company, not with our current insurance provider, but we would have to go apply for it, and we would have to be accepted. I believe in the current state of our systems and our, what we have in place, we would not pass. You know, based on what the S A O came back and told us where we're risky and what we need to have in place to mitigate. I don't think that somebody would come in and give us insurance.
That was actually also what WCIA suggested, that in our current state, we probably would not be able to obtain coverage.
Yeah, with, with that, thank you, Erin and Selena, I'm gonna ask Ben to jump in in regards to where the PD stands today and in the future need for IT.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I think Mr. Smart and some people don't underestimate the amount of IT work that we have pending right now, that we're quite frankly overwhelmed. Stephanie does the best she can, but just simply implementing the vehicle body camera systems, which are interconnected with the prosecuting attorney's office and the online cloud server and the editing and all the public disclosure and the maintenance and the officer training and their equipment maintenance alone. She about came to my office, not wanna say in tears, but she was not really happy with it, when I said, hey, we need to get this up and running now. She just could not do it. She said, we cannot have a raw on day talk on October first, and that was just the cameras. The nightmare we're running into with this new police facility with IT is really trying to get the REA people to the table to assist us with a lot of the work that we have to get on the front end to get everything connected up and running inside the police facility, and the proper way to do that. And I can tell you with Roscoe and Stephanie and myself, we've been very frustrated, not because REA isn't capable, it's just that they're limited resources to give us the time and effort that we require to get this stuff done, and once it's up and running, maintain. A sad note, and the timing is prophetic, I think, is the person that did most of our IT work inside the police department here, currently with our current systems, which are numerous. Matt Perry passed away from COVID this last weekend, so now we don't have that. It, it's just unsustainable. I can tell you from experience that the police, any police department, any jurisdiction is, demands IT more than, more so than any city department. And right now, with a lot of the systems that we have coming online, it, it's just too much. Contract REA isn't gonna work, Stephanie can't do it. We just don't have that capability, so I guess in short, which is too late by now, I realize that, Mr. Smart, there's plenty of work to do for IT. That just is not getting done.
Yeah, I, I actually.
Then on top of that, the policies that Aaron spoke, spoke of, it, it's just, it's gonna be a full-time job. This guy's gonna be busy, we're, we're holding back on a lot of work to be done, simply because we don't have the resources.
Yeah, well, my apologies, 'cause I didn't see anything in the.
Yeah, well, my apologies, because I didn't see anything in the, in the packet, but maybe I missed it, that, that indicated that this person would be supporting the police department as well with all of their IT equipment needs. So that, that certainly adds a a, a lot to the scope and I, I, that clarifies and makes me understand much better. So thank you.
It's really a citywide uh IT person. So it's gonna be our water system, sewer, um, anything IT-related in any component of the city as a whole.
Roscoe, can you touch just briefly a little bit about some of the uh security breaches that have occurred in in the public work side of things, just to give uh an idea of what this individual would be doing day-to-day, looking at new patches and things in that nature?
Well, I haven't been involved. If, if you can't turn it off and and flip it back on and get rid of the blue screen, I don't know what to do to fix it. I'm about police tech savvy with this stuff. So um, I think the last time that council took a hard look at an IT person, I don't know if it was four, six years ago, it seems to all blend together. Uh, Julie is working with the Port of Kennewick, and at that time, we were looking at, I think, sharing an employee with the Port of Kennewick, and I don't remember what the split was. But I do know that the gentleman was uh now works for the city of Kennewick as an IT manager, but uh at the time refused to work with the city because we were set up for a critical failure. So uh, he had a two-page list of things that need to be put in place. And I Julie did an amazing job trying to update hardware and stuff, working with Benton REA, but again, uh, part-time person. Um, you know, and, and a part-time consultant was just putting Band-Aids on Band-Aids. And unfortunately, my department was the one that got hit not with a cyber ransom or anything, but had a critical failure where we lost a month of everything in public works. Uh, and the joke is, you know, yeah, tough, Roscoe, you lost your email, tough, you lost this or lost that, but uh, we, we, we joked with Drew because he had Belmont Boulevard designed, lost the whole design, had to redo it. He ended up winning an award for it, you know, so that was a joke. It took him twice, though, to design it, should have won an award. But those kind of things that I'm glad that we had a hardware failure that hit public works and didn't hit the utility side of things. I couldn't imagine losing everybody's financial data or cross-connection data and trying to reset that up. Um, you know, so uh, I, I've kind of sat on the outside looking at this. I've got SCADA systems that run the water and sewer system. So you heard about the, the breach with that gas pipeline? How they got in there and shut that down? Could they do that to our SCADA? Yeah, they could. We could lose control of it, and I'd be running blind. Is it the end of the world? No. When I started here, they didn't have that telemetry system, so they sent up a guy with a stick and looked down the reservoir to see where we're at. And you can turn wells on manually. It's not ideal, but um, we, we could function, but it just set up, it, it, it's, it's uh discerning that they can get in there and get control of your wastewater treatment plan and, and cause failure, discharges untreated sewage to the, to the river, or they can turn off your water, uh, you know, the pumps and stuff and wreck havoc. But yeah, uh, on the financial side, uh, I think the bigger risk is with utility billing and, you know, the, the cash that the city has on hand that, you know, uh, just looking at what the local agencies, local here have done with ransomware, just the risk is too big. And uh, I, I see, uh, Mr. Smart, you know, you're asking about the different thing. There's a lot of, there's a lot of IT stuff that just doesn't get done. And it's, it's the list just continues to grow. So I, I, I think Selena and Stephanie and the mayor and Aaron have gone through and, and tried to make sure that uh, this is way more than a full-time job. I, I think uh uh, the, the person's gonna be very loaded up, and that's even with um Benton REA. Um, again, the fixed cost allows us to utilize their software and stuff. So that's a cheaper thing, and I think it'll cut out the uh on-call calls for service. I mean, one recently, I can't remember what it cost. But just when we had the break-in at the maintenance shop, I had to call their after-hours to get the video uh to try to get that to the police department. I don't know, was that just under a thousand dollars to get that? I don't remember what the, the cost was so that we can identify that the, the person that tried to break in and get that information out to the police as quickly as possible. So things like that. So I don't know if I answered the question, but or just rambled, but I, I see the need from public work side.
No, I, I appreciate your history, Roscoe. And then I believe there was probably uh, three and possibly four council members that were not on council when we had the original IT discussion. Uh, it was actually uh in uh, in a budget request that was uh not supported by council, and they wanted to have uh more information as to just exactly what kind of costs and IT would bring uh to the budget and what the need was. And that is when uh Jessica Platt reached out to the auditor's office, which three years later, we finally get our report. Uh, and that in itself, I believe, going through the exec session that we had, pretty much laid out the need. Uh, and so fortunately, we haven't had to uh suffer any uh compromising hacks. But I also wonder how many uh, how many uh uh hacks were, were caught by the individuals that we show that were paying ransoms? How many did they, did they catch and didn't have to pay? That's another question that, that we have too. So we've, we've uh, we've brought forth all of the necessities that council had asked a couple of budget cycles ago, and it's here for discussion this evening. So if, John, if that's all that you had, I'll move on to Councilmember Brown.
The, one last quick comment, and I'll, I'll shut up after that. Uh, that's all great explanation, and I appreciate that perspective. Um, the uh, the other thing I would say is that having now brought in the police department and some of these other issues, um, a person has to wonder, and like Roscoe just said, you know, is it more than one FTE? And um, so I'm asking, I guess my question is, is this person that you're proposing to bring in, in, will they be of a caliber that can um either uh manage uh future uh technicians, or will there be a person in each department who's sort of assigned to sort of be the the handler of that department's IT needs? Not that, not, not to provide the solution, but to provide the, but, but to keep track of the needs to help this individual who we're gonna bring in and pot heat. We're gonna heap all this stuff onto them. And, and I just see it as being a potentially ineffective way. So I'm hoping that there's a management strategy to to parse the in, the, the needs to this individual so that he can, he or she can be as effective as they can be. So I'll just leave that as a comment till we move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Um, I don't have any problem with this IT person. I think it's probably long overdue, but my deal is with the REA, I, I just don't want to be paying half a dozen people for this position. Now, are we just gonna go to a contract with them? Um, we're not, it, it looks like seventy, you, you said seventy-five, a hundred, twenty. We paid him a thousand to get footage, so um, can we just go to a flat contract with these guys now?
It, it is a contract, and there was just a variable portion within the contract that uh specified when they are doing work for us. It's so much per hour. So I think the idea is, is when we get a person here, we just won't have to call them as often. So those are variable costs that um, if we don't use them, we don't pay it. So I think that it's good probably to have it in the contract uh in case we do have a major emergency and need to call them in. Um, but I think uh we'd be cognizant of, I know, uh, a few years ago with Julie, it was set up that not any individual can call Benton REA and request services. Um, and that helps uh control the cost of those. Uh, so it all goes through the city clerk. Um, it, where we, she's the one that actually has to request it. That's an internal policy. So it's not just any employee calling Benton REA asking for service. And I mean, that really.
I know we talked about, I, I guess I just, maybe I don't remember, but um, okay, so twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, our bill was about thirty thousand. So what is the flat contract rate we're using? Because you're using their scanning staff.
Let me pull it back up.
And then also, we gotta take into consideration.
Variable on the number of units that we have, because it uh varies slightly. So if we, it depends on the number of uh like desktops um, and items that are the software is um in on. And the more we go up, the, the more uh hardware that we have, that goes up. So in twenty twenty, it was twenty thousand. In twenty nineteen, it was eighteen thousand, six hundred.
Will we ever be able to pull that back into the city then? Just, we have to get software, I assume.
Yeah, and the software is very expensive.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Gail. Uh, Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Yes, um, I think my question is pretty much gonna be similar to what we had talked about uh prior, and I have also talked to Aaron on the phone about this. Uh, I'm wondering, and I already know the answer. Have we asked currently for bids from security firms? And the reason I'm asking is because when we look at instances where, for instance, P and L had this security issue, they have an entire department. And I, I know that uh Mayor Protem Brink is aware of this. They have an entire department that deals with cybersecurity. And if P and L had that sort of a risk with an entire department, I'm concerned that one person isn't going to be enough. So I'm wondering if it might be a better return on investment if we were to hire a cybersecurity firm, which I'm not sure, and I would need to know, would they also provide the software that Benton REA does? I'm assuming that they would also have after-hour uh availability and of course during our availability, that I'm sure that the cost would depend on the contract. But first, I guess, have we asked for a bid from cybersecurity firms to figure out how much it would cost?
Aaron?
No, we have not. Um, the idea is that we're looking uh beyond just cybersecurity in this case. Um, uh, cybersecurity is a huge part of it. Information systems as a whole, security is a part of it. And not just cybersecurity. And like we've talked before, um, the idea is this person would have policies and procedures that they would put in place, which is easy to do. Well, sort of easy to do. We could go grab some and then put West Richland on them and call them ours. But the follow-through and making sure that, that things are implemented so that those policies and procedures and the controls, that's a big, a big part of IT, much like finance, is the controls are put in place to prevent things from happening. And then uh also the um communication and kind of the direct one-on-one with employees. Uh, employees, users of the system uh are very soft and are, tend to be a bigger risk. Um, but the education of don't click on that link or learn to question it is very important. So kind of what we talked about in our uh meeting and then know before that Stephanie deploys, if we have one employee that continues to fail those, um, there could be some one-on-one time with them and like some specialized things. If we go to a firm, uh, that's not really gonna be, I don't think possible. It's not gonna be somebody vested in West Richland, and it's not gonna have that um, hands-on here.
Okay, so with that, I know that, for instance, uh, with the work that I do um at the facility, uh, I know that even though we have an entire department, I don't really have any one-on-one. The training that I get is actually very similar to what we receive in email where we get the same training where they talk about, don't click on the emails, check the emails to make sure that it has correct information in it. So I'm not sure that I fully agree that having somebody in person, but I do understand the need to have the controls over the um, um, the procedures when you're talking about creating the new procedures. So I'm wondering um, if there would be a way to look at how much it would cost to have a cybersecurity firm and then separately have uh someone for just a couple of months, it would be to create the procedures. And then that would be just a procedure people would need to know to follow. We could give it to, honestly, I'm not sure how cybersecurity firms function. So if they don't do things where they don't uh do following procedures for a particular organization, then I would definitely want to know that. I'm just concerned that we might not be able to find one person that could be as good as, say, for instance, P and L's entire department for cybersecurity. But I do agree that we should have a person in person, at least for the amount of time needed to create the procedures um, and to set up the baseline for what we're doing. I just and I know that we need to have another person in general in the city hall because we have a lot of people doing a lot of work more than what they can do. I, I feel we've got an amazing staff that does a lot of work and really needs to take some actual vacations, Stephanie.
You actually just kind of picked up my, my point was that, um, yes, uh, we are at a point right now where we simply need, aside from cybersecurity, we do need more help with the IT and information systems part of it. So that person at least would be able to help with that. It's just getting to be too much. But you also pointed out, and somebody else did as well, um, that these are some pretty big companies that were hacked. Um, and I think what's really important here is that, yes, while we're just kind of starting out at a really basic level, getting started with this, it's really important that we have the ability to get insurance. Um, realizing that we're not gonna have any coverage here pretty soon and being told by two different entities that we would probably not be able to purchase insurance on the market because of where we stand right now, at least this gets that whole process started. Um, because regardless of what they're asking for, we're going to need insurance to cover this gap.
But if we were to have a cybersecurity firm, would they be able to make a fairly large implementation of, here's all of the software that we need right now? I don't know that answer. Do you know that answer?
If you're just talking in terms of cybersecurity, I would imagine that, yes, that they could just focus on that and get us where we need to go in that aspect. Um.
Another thing to remember, counsel, is we're, we're, we're taken into serious, serious consideration of our audit. And we're following the recommendations of the professionals that sees the vulnerability that we have. So that is a, uh, one of the deciding factors for the direction that we have chose to bring to council.
Right, and I, if I remember correctly, uh, Selena, you were saying that they recommended either a person or an entity to manage the cybersecurity for the city, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Um, our, when, when staff looked at it, we were trying to maximize, um, looking at all the things that we had to fulfill and looking at how much money we had to do it. It just made more sense to us to bring somebody in to cover all the bases instead of continuing to piecemeal it out. Because you are looking at cybersecurity, hardware, software upgrades, patches, those sorts of things. I think it might be different if we were totally covering our current situation, but we're not.
So it almost sounds like it might even be better, depending on the cost of it, to have a cybersecurity firm and get a full-time employee that could do um things that are not specifically cybersecurity related. That's what it sounds like you're saying. Is that accurate?
I'm just afraid then we come back to the budget.
Right, yes. No, absolutely, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Blue, or excuse me, I see Councilman Fed, or uh, Brink, Mayor Protem Brink. My apologies, sir. Your hand was hiding behind my camera here. I didn't see it up.
Uh, that's okay, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I have a couple of questions here. Um, I'll start with uh you, Ms. Mathers. Could you just tell me the methodology you used or how you went about setting the salary range for this individual?
Yes, we did um comparables. So we took a look at, we were really looking at information systems. Uh, we wanted somebody that could take a look at the system overall, and they could work backward and plug in, um, not only how they functionally work, but how the policies would work, and that could put the police information together and the city's information and, and manage everything as one entity. Um, and then we took, so then we realized we needed somebody that was really uh an information systems administrator and not an IT administrator, not just cybersecurity. So we really looked at somebody that could handle the whole thing. And then we did a salary comparison for um people in that. And then we did a salary comparison for people in that, in that field. So we kind of worked backwards into the level that we believed we needed and then looked at comparable salaries for it.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I'm looking at the job description. And Mr. Mayor, this individual will report directly to you, is that correct?
That's correct, and/or my designate.
All right. Roscoe, you talked a little bit about SCADA systems and, and so forth and the telemetry capturing on the operation of those systems. I did not see SCADA in the job description or the position description. Is that something that needs to be addressed or added? Or, or is, is that inferred?
Currently, we consult out for that.
I don't think we're quite there yet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to get that in there, but it, it's a unique skill set. Currently, we consult out with a consultant at a Yakima.
Right.
And the gentleman in the firm that we're dealing with or have dealt with the last 20 years, I think's got, I want to say, to be say, one foot into retirement. I, he's probably got both feet out of retirement. So the, the service, when we do have issues with SCADA, has not been timely. And so we are looking at a local company firm that does it here for some of the other cities to help us with that. But that would be something that, to see what this person's expertise, to see if they could take on some of that. But it really, they've got, I'm, I'm down the list, Fred, with, with everything else that's going. So we'll see how that person does and then see if this is something that can help with the SCADA system.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, your Microsoft certifications or others don't really cover SCADA systems. So I just wanted to see what direction we were going in on the long term.
Didn't talk about that.
Okay, all right. And then, Ms. Gwen, you mentioned that some of the things that Benton REA does is handle patches, patch management, scanning software and so forth. Of course, I see some of those responsibilities listed in the job description. So is it your thought, or Mr. Mayor, your thought that this individual is going to partner with Benton REA on some of these issues as we go through this transition?
We really do believe that this person will be able to take some of the duties that we're billing Benton REA for hourly from their contract, and they'll be able to absorb that. So that is the goal, that we can reduce Benton REA's invoice by having this person take on more of their, those duties.
Okay, all right. I was able to look at the complete SAO, SAO report. You know, the security audit, looked at the details of it. The bottom line is I, we need this position. My opinion, the recommendations of the audit, the vulnerabilities, I'll leave it at that, that were identified during the audit do require the attention of an IT professional. And I think just simply having that direct interface capability within the office. The city of West Richland is a big plus, particularly with a small organization like us. We're not PNNL, that's true. We don't have 4,500 employees. But, you know, with our 70, you know, so employees and seasonal ones, I think it's, it's appropriate to do this. So I support it. Thank you for the answers to my questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brink. Councilmember Blue?
Yes, I am supporting the position wholeheartedly. But I'd like to explain something. We will likely, as everyone says, we will likely need to consult out to get good advice. But we need somebody to, I mean, it's inconceivable that we don't have somebody who's dedicated to get all the procedures in place to go slap people's hands when they don't do it right to quote, you know, really answer the questions that the auditor is. Because I can tell you, let's be realistic, our staff is, is employed. I mean, Stephanie doesn't have the time of doing this, Selena doesn't. And I think it's appropriate to get an individual who's focused on this area alone. They are not going to protect us from a cyber attack, but they're going to be the ones that, quote, help us, you know, be in a position to improve ourselves. So I wholeheartedly, you know, support this position.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Fettow?
Yeah, the same point as Councilman Blue, I support it. I think once, once the police station's up and running and body camera footage is out there, I think this is, that alone could support a half-time job, half-FT, just managing body armor, body cameras and all that stuff. I think Public Disclosure Act doesn't require a full-time or at least half-time FT, just, just on that alone. We're not going to get someone that's going to make us bulletproof, obviously, looking at PNNL, who probably designed cybersecurity. But we also aren't as big a target as PNNL is. So I, I think an in-house person is probably our best fit. I think trying to do a combo, separating duties, I think that got kind of messy. People stepping on people's toes and consultants will be probably more expensive anyway. I did have a question on the salary, though. So the, the number that's in, in the packet, that's the all-in cost, correct? That's benefits, that's the whole thing, right?
You're talking about the one in the budget amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go over that in a, in the, in a minute.
Okay, that's all right, thank you.
That's fully loaded, Councilman. Yeah, so you're, you're telling me that we, we don't have national security in our, in our data banks? Is that what you're telling me, Mr. Fettow? Perfect. With that, we'll move on to another national security threat, and that'd be Councilmember Bill.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as somebody that does work for a company that has national security, I will tell you that my, my personal data has in fact ended up in downtown Beijing with the rest of the Department of Energy as a result of one hack. But I, I'll make this quick because it, you know, we've been talking about this for a while. Because of the insurance, because of the police needs, because of the audit, because we need somebody that's focused, everybody's got a computer right now. Get somebody on board, get them taking a look at our system, evaluate. And then at that point, perhaps we look at something that Councilmember Moran was talking about as to if we need to do some additional things. But I wholeheartedly endorse, endorse this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, counsel. Councilman Smart?
Well, just as a last comment here, while I talk about insurance, has anybody done any evaluation to find out if this move is going to be enough to allow us to get insurance against the hack?
What we were told was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Or, 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 or like what Moran was saying, well, will we be forced to still subscribe to an additional protection service with a large company in order just to get basic insurance? I mean, what are the needs? How, how do we get insured? Because it looks to me like practically, not, well, as you've said, nothing we can do will eliminate all of the risk, obviously. But it looks to me like we might not be able to touch this as far as reducing risk. It may just be that the value in this person or this position will, will really primarily be just handling the day-to-day and, and all of the work that's been laid out before us. That I can understand. The, the risk mitigation, though, sounds to me like two things. One, subscribing to something like, I just did a quick look, a place called provendatarecovery.com. And I just went through their pricing, and it looks to me like we would have to pay something on the order of, and just guessing at how many computers we have, maybe like $70,000 a year just to subscribe to their virus protection program for our entire city and, and plus a few other perks. So I'm just saying that I think there's additional cost beyond this person that you're looking to hire. And I'm wondering if we've done any investigation into it, so.
I wish I could say that there won't be any additional costs, but the truth is, there is, this is probably the tip of the iceberg to some degree in the sense that we will have to get somebody in here to start to put the basic infrastructure together for us so we can move on to the next step. SAO and WCIA basically let us know that unless we get just the basic level of policies, procedures, some sort of dedicated person or entity to monitor it, that, that these are, they said that these are the first steps that we need to do to kind of get there. So I do believe we're going to have additional things as we move down this path. Unfortunately, this is, we're still at a pretty elementary level here.
Well, I guess I would just finish by saying that I, I, I support this, but I, I would encourage staff to, if they haven't already, to go out and look at some of these companies that you can find with a quick web search. Evaluate the cost of quote-unquote full coverage, which many evidently businesses and cities subscribe to. And then balance that with the level of person that you're thinking about hiring. You know, is this somebody who's at an upper, almost management level? Or is this more of a technician type of a person? And, and I just, I'm hoping that, that we find the right balance there. I, I, I'm not denying that there's not a need for somebody to do these day-to-day things. I, I just want to make sure that we're not asking them to provide something that they can't provide. We're not under the, under the, we're not being deceived into thinking they can solve our cybersecurity when in fact we, we are going to have to hire one of these other firms anyway. And then, and then price them appropriately, pay them, compensate them appropriately for the, for the day-to-day IT management tasks that, that, that we're really probably going to rely on them for. So that's, I'll, I'll support this position, but I, I just want to make sure, I want to get some assurance that that homework's been done. I think we're going to have to do it eventually, for sure, like these, these virus programs and so forth.
Thanks, John. And then Kate?
Yes, thank you. I want to definitely say what Councilmember Smart said. Yes, I really want to make sure that we're evaluating as we go, and I'm sure that we are and that we're going to. But one thing that Councilmember Fettow mentioned that I just want to make sure that I'm clear on. So I know that we were talking about for the body cams and the dash cams. It sounded like, Councilmember Fettow, that you were saying that this position would be for the public records for this. But that's, that's actually still going to go to Stephanie. So I'm wondering, is this still going to be something where we are going to need another FTE to help with specifically public records? Because that's a lot that's going to still be put on Stephanie's plate that was not there before. It almost sounds like we need two FTEs, one for IT and cyber, and another for assistance with public records? Or I'm not sure what exactly.
That is actually, that is actually one of the reasons. It's, it's a shuffling of duties and why the IT position, they are going to take on part of what Stephanie's doing so she can backfill with some of the other work that is created. There will be a shuffling of duties with some of this, both hopefully taking it away from Benton REA and giving it to the IT person and taking it away from Stephanie and giving it to the IT person because she's going to have other work flow down to her.
But the public records for the body cams and the dash cams, that is still going to be Stephanie, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And I support this. I just, like Councilmember Smart said, I'm hoping that we are going to be looking at the, the dollar amounts of what we actually need, since this is just the start.
Yep, thank you. And moving in the right direction with that, counsel, good discussion. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
A pose like sign, please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to items 8D is an ordinance amending the 2021-2022 budget to include a new IT position from the previous resolution amending the salary schedule. And we'll ask Finance Director Ms. Gwen to present her staff report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I'm presenting the sixth budget amendment for the 2122 biennial. This amendment is to fund the information systems administrator that Selena just presented. This position is an administrative position, much like we have here in finance, HR, city clerk positions. Each of these functions are initially budgeted in the general fund. And even though they support all, multiple funds, we then use a cost allocation plan to charge other funds for the services they receive based on historical information that we have for IT services from the city clerk and Benton REA. General fund has routinely spent about 65% of those IT costs and then 8% to the street fund, combined for water sewer of 20%, irrigation fund 2% and stormwater fund 5%. Just to note, these are all estimates based on historical. As we get in here and get going, where they actually spend their time will probably fluctuate some and could have some changes. It's important to talk about this because even though we're not going to see the effect of these funds, because we do have a one-year lag on when we recognize them. So for 2021, the indirect cost allocation is based on 2020 time and 2020 expenditures. So we're really not going to see these other funds affected until 2324. And as Roscoe points out, like this affects his future budgets. So it's really important to take that into consideration. This budget amendment appropriates an additional $196,370 for the information systems administrator. Some of the assumptions when deriving this number, we use the midpoint on the salary schedule that Selena presented you with. We calculate full benefits for a full family. So we're being conservative and saying that somebody, medical, full family, vision, dental comes in, the most expensive option they can. The timeline, as Selena said, was kind of the last quarter of this year. It's kind of tight, but it's last quarter of this year with all of next year. This budget amendment also includes getting them set up. So that would be office supplies, workstation, your fancy uniform, the city of West Richland shirts that we have, any professional memberships, cell phone, communications, those type of things. So what you see in this $196,000 is not just a salary. It is getting them established and their full department budget for a quarter of this year and all of next year. Staff recommends counsel pass the ordinance, amending the 2122 biennial budget to fund a new information systems administrator. The fiscal impact of this would authorize additional appropriations in the amount of $196,370, bringing the revised total general fund expenditures to $18,864,181 and an overall 2122 amended budget expenditure total to $65,316,577.
Thank you. Stephanie, do we have anyone from our citizenry have joined us this evening?
Still just us.
I see no one. With that, we'll go ahead and move on. Councilman, motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance 2321, amending the city of West Richland 2021-2022 biennial budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Counsel, any more questions amongst yourselves? Questions of staff, or have we pretty much covered it all? Okay, I see we're there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. We do not have any unfinished business this evening or new business tonight. And I see we still have no one from the public, correct, Stephanie?
You are correct.
With that, I'll ask counsel if you have any comments or announcements to make, please raise your hand and they'll be recognized. See, Councilmember Brown, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I had, Alicia, if you're still on, I, I did get some park comments. One I'd already asked Eric about is the continued pass along the dike down here at the entranceway. Another comment was that the bushes are going over so far that I guess... Another comment was that the bushes are going over so far that I guess some people are afraid to walk that. We've had some kind of sketchy guys down here. And one was asking why we're not getting parks and new subdivisions. Yes. Oh, and then we've got a light pollution on the auto shop down below here, the new one. Got some L I LEDs that are like to light up the whole neighborhood. And that's it.
Okay, and Roscoe, Roscoe, you might be able to discuss to that a little bit later here in regards to the gateway and the conversations we've been having with with Eric and and the commitment that we have with the curb project. And then, Gail, when when people are are making question of you, do you refer them to the this website to file the concern?
On the lights, it's my understanding that he is, the neighbors there have submitted several things. As far as the parks, I I explained the park plan and how that works.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, just want to make sure that we get something by way of E-GO, so we can look into anything that gives us the documentation tracing.
I understand that's going back and forth, but.
Okay, all right. And Councilman Blue.
Well, I, this won't be news for you, but I I put out a, I sent you the invite. They're going to have the River Wheat Whacker out for a display on Friday. So it's been parked over at at the mosquito control facility. I actually went and saw it last week and it had the the jars, the jaws that look like shark teeth come out. Looks like a great thing for you not to run into on the river. But they'll be doing a demo and a press release. They're gonna run it down at Horn Rapids Park, which is turn off to Benton City off of two forty. But that'll be this Friday. So I'm not quite sure what portions of the river on our banks. You know, most of it is, they've had it out and it's worked reasonably well, but they're working through the issues and hopefully we'll see a little bit of improvement. But it came in late this year, so they're not being able to really evaluate its whole functionness. They'll just simply play with it for the rest of the season.
Hey, thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. So we had a Benton Franklin Council of Governments Economic Development District meeting on the twentieth. And we had a tip amendment that we approved. Talk more about the local funding, which I'm sure you will get more information than you already have about the possible costs that B F C O G is asking for. And we also found out, well, we heard that there is going to be a traffic counter current. It looks like I've already seen it in some places from the sixth until the tenth of this month. That's their annual traffic count, I believe, that they have. And we also, for the B F C O G, have created a finance committee to look at the amount of money that is currently in the budget for B F C O G and they're gonna send recommendations to the chair for anybody to add. There's currently about five or so members, Marie Mosley, Vicky Gordon, Gloria Boyce, and they're looking for two other folks. They probably already got them, though. And yeah, that's that's all I got. I hope everybody's doing well. Hopefully, Councilmember Fettow, you're doing better.
Yeah, and Councilmember Moran, as we we talked about the the fees, membership fees and things of that nature, that does some of the conversations that city managers have had. Maria is is sitting with the representation for us, so we'll we'll get more in the weeds in regards to that. And then as I have any more information I can share, I I appreciate you sharing with us and I'll pass on what I hear from the intel of the insiders there, too. So, yeah, it's a what their proposals are is not acceptable to me. But we'll we'll bring it to Council for that discussion when we get there. So thank you for that, Kate. Appreciate it. All right. Any staff members this evening? Chief Majetic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of Council. Just a couple items. First, obviously, the most important, as everybody's aware, on August twenty-fifth, we had a very bad situation occur here in West Richland, Van Geest, right down the street from the police department. You know, and and I I think it's reflective that even though West Richland itself is a very safe community to reside and raise a family, we're surrounded by other jurisdictions. A lot of times, problems come from the outside. So it it's just a nice reminder for all of us, you know, even though we get complacent that West Richland, hey, why does the police department need this? Or why do other state departments need certain things? Bad things happen. And they don't always originate in West Richland. Sometimes they just come, you know, to business. In this case, you know, multiple homicide suspect, multiple murders occurred and arson's. And what does he roll? He rolls right into downtown West Richland where he decides his car is gonna burn up and, you know, engage officers in the shootout. Who would ever thunk? So please keep this in mind in the future. So we asked for a lot of things. Council's been very supportive of the police department. I want to say thank you for that. But these are what we planned for. These are what we trained for. These are what we equipped for. So even though it's a large investment, you can see that all that money, boy, it gets it gets worth it on one incident like this. And it was scary. Our officers performed magnificently. Be very proud of your police department, the way the situation's handled before, during, and after, and currently. Now, we're still going through a lot. It's something you should be proud of. And again, thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor, for your support, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to accomplish half the things that we're able to accomplish. Second, the new police facility, still on time, on budget. And we're three months, three months, we should be moving in that building. Can you believe it? That'll be four years from the day that it was this idea. It's a record project for the Northwest. You'd never see a public project move this quickly and this efficiently. It's something that I know we're all gonna be proud of. And I look forward to COVID being totally over so we can have a big party the whole week when we do the ribbon cutting. Does keep our fingers crossed, but so far, so good. And I will say that mostly it's attributed, not to Roscoe Slade, but Drew Woodgrove. And Roscoe will be the first to tell you, the guy's a rock star. And Roscoe and Elka is keeping this project on track. I just can't thank them enough, and I'll continue to do that on a daily basis. And finally, Mr. Mayor, this Saturday is nine eleven. At ten thirty, they'll be having a ceremony at the South Ridge Complex in Kennewick. There'll be guest speakers there, including Congressman Newhouse, and that's really to commemorate and remember the twentieth anniversary, if we can believe that, of nine eleven, when it occurred. And I know it's just like the moon landing and Kennedy and Richard Nixon got out of office. Everybody remembers what they were doing and what where they're at on that day. It's something that we should always be reminded of, and this is a good opportunity if you're available. It's a beautiful ceremony. My myself, my command staff will be there. And really just to pay homage to what happened that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I see, Mr. Slade, you have your hand up. Is there one question I have for you? Have you yet been able to say no to the chief?
No, not at all. He's they're getting, they're getting all their needs met with the police station and Drew and that team are
The design build brings that to that particular program, yeah.
So just a couple items. Representative Clicker, well, from the sixteenth district, will be here on Thursday. The mayor and I are giving him a tour. He's very interested. I think he's on the Transportation Committee in Olympia. And so met him at a Good Roads meeting. Gail was there or by Zoom, but took the opportunity to invite him to West Richland to see our S R two-two-four Red Mount interchange and some of our other projects. And so he he's taken me up on that. And so we'll be doing that Thursday and showing the importance of that project and also our keen bottom-range intersection project. And hopefully, if there is a transportation package in the future that some of West Richland's needs are met in that package. And then the other thing, Councilman Gail Brown, the Gateway of Education, Eric's been working. He pulled out the original vegetation design along the above the ordinary high watermark. And some of those vegetation that they put in has been overgrown. And so we, he's went back to the consultant and identified what we can thin out of those. So the lookout can actually see the the river. And then also, I believe we're working with mosquito control to spray the trees that are growing up in the riprap underneath the bridge. We don't have aquatics license, but that department or that agency does. And so we'll be using them. If not, we can, we also have some contracts. So we'll be working on trying to do some management down there a little better and thin out some of that overgrowth and get that viewpoint open and get those trees out of the rocks there. So I think there's been a couple of people that approached the mayor and staff asking about it. So we did look into it and you'll see some in the next, probably, I don't know, I I'm short of people now to mow the parks. We can't get seasonal help. So that's been a challenge, but they're gonna get down there and try to do some work down there at the gateway.
And just because of the stuff that we planted, you know, I I'm all for getting rid of some of that because the maintenance is too much. Where she was explaining, it's down this way. It's that.
Which which way, Gail? Towards towards?
Towards the golf course.
Toward the golf course.
Of course, that section there, and it's just a bunch of.
Is is it overgrown on the road or the pathway?
The pathway.
Okay, I'll I'll mention that to the maintenance guys. They were focused down by the the bridge, but I'll
I actually haven't been down there for a while, but it sounded like the river, that river mass down there, more toward the golf course.
Okay, we'll look into it. Thanks, Gail.
Yeah, the, I asked Eric to take a peek at that, and then we pulled out the the plantings that what is McKay and Spazito ask us to put in there? And they're willows. What do willows do? So I've asked them to work with us to, if we have to get any deeper in the weeds, and no pun intended, to to get that worked out with ecology and fisheries and everybody that we had to work with to get plantings in there, we could, we can certainly do that, but no, no sense of having a overlook if you can't overlook. So we're gonna, we're gonna get there. So appreciate staff working on that. All righty, perfect. So with that, Council, I think that probably pretty much concludes our meeting this evening. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-three. Thank you very much for all your good conversation, support, and relief is on the way, Miss Stephanie and the chief and Selena and Aaron. Thank you all for the hard work of preparing this to get it put together. It's certainly be beneficial as we move forward and grow our community and city. Thank you, guys. See you later.
Have a good evening.